Good evening, everyone. Apologize for the delay in starting our meeting. We actually were just finishing our pre-candidate form for community members that are interested in becoming a board member. So I'm going to call our meeting to order for the Board of Education Business Meeting for November 9th, 2023. I am looking for a motion to excuse one of our board members.
Move that we excuse Jennifer Lawrence?
Second.
Mrs. Emery Gessman?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Moving on to 1.3, adoption of the agenda.
Move we adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Emery Gessman?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. We will move on to 1.4, our Pledge of Allegiance. We have some students here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. They want to come on up.
Whenever you all are ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is an awesome group you got here.
Well, of course, the Marvin Stars.
I should have known that, right?
Thank you.
They're still awesome, right?
All right, thank you, our Marvin Stars. We are going to move on to our School of the Month, which is Marvin. If you all would like to come forward.
So I have some folks here, some Marvin Stars, I would like to introduce to you all. My name is Craig Thurman. You know me, but Principal Marvin. I also have Ms. Butler, our Assistant Principal over there with the camera. And then I have here Makai Washington and Hayden Bogan, Mercy Alagende, and Carlos Reyes. And so we are going to talk through some initiatives. Oh, and one of my awesome teachers, fifth grade teachers, Ms. Cindy Murray. Skip the rivalry, Ms. Murray, I apologize. So you all know the vision, but for me, what we're going to talk about today is talking about developing leaders and productive citizens and personal lives of integrity and fulfillment. That's our connection today to the vision. For the mission, I really think getting our students to think critically and solve problems and develop the knowledge and skills that they need as they enter our global society. Our connection to the equity statement is that our teachers will embed cultural competency, cultural responsiveness, and trauma-informed practices into their teaching and interactions with students. So we at Marvin have been talking a lot about what it means to bring joy into the learning for our students. And we've been reading a book called Unearthing Joy, and we did a lot of our back-to-school PD that was focused in this area. And the author, Goldie Muhammad, is actually St. Louis native and came and spoke. And Ms. Butler and many other people here were there, and she's very inspiring, and she talked about just what it takes to educate minority children. And the thing she says about joy is that joy is the ultimate goal of teaching and learning. The pursuit of joy is helping students to uplift beauty, aesthetics, truth, ease, wonder, wellness, and solutions to the problems of the world and personal fulfillment. The bottom right picture, there's her framework for learning, and she focuses on identity, so knowing who you are. The skills, so how we are able to do things, our intellect, the content knowledge we need, criticality, so giving our students the tools to evaluate the world around them, and last, joy. So, and she says, you know, that's what sparks us to push forward as we go with our lives. So we really don't focus on how we can do that at Marvin. And we really value it, and I wrote it into our C-SO. So I said, this is what I want you to have fun with your kids this year. I want us to look at ways that it can be added into our curriculum, because if we can get our kids excited about learning, then we're never going to move forward. And so what we have talked about so far at Marvin is promoting joy in education through varying our engagement strategies. We've been using engagement strategies. Occasionally get it in a rut, all right? We want to make sure we're keeping that fresh for our kids. Relevant cross-curricular topics. Goldie Muhammad talks about, you know, the more that we can weave our learning together with throughout the different subjects, the more relevant it becomes for our kids. Personalizing experiences for our kids, sharing artifacts. And recently, I went in to a teacher's classroom, and I think she shared this with some other classes as well, that they were reading a story that had a music box in the story and a brooch. And so she had some examples of those in her room that the kids were going to pass around and talk about. So just making those things more personal for our kids and hands-on. Also making sure we have representative materials and topics so that that relevance for all of our kids. And then our goal is to create lifelong learners. So what does it look like at the different levels? So these are some of our primary examples. So lots of hands-on activities, creating math with Play-Doh, doing some science with flashlights and shadows. Down here, we have a, they were working with money and they had a little store set up. Total physical response is something we did back to school, and I enjoyed peeking in and out to see teachers, they're coming up with hand motions to go with vocabulary. And so these kids are talking about mountains and plateaus and different things the day that this was taken. And then this group has a song that they sing once a week or so about being part of their community. So that's some of the things that we've seen in the primary levels. And in the intermediate levels, we've seen, these examples include, you know, some hands-on math and science lessons that are cross-curricular. We have a donut shop set up the other day, and kids were learning lots of different things that was connected to reading and science and math, and they were selling things and a lot of different things. They were excited. And then we have a project, Don't Let Math Scare You, which incorporated some crafts, some writing, some math, all intertwined. So these are some of the things we've seen so far. And as you can see, we had some animals get loose at Marvin. Our fifth graders, which is why they're here with us today, created a volume zoo. And so we're going to talk a little bit about what went into that. And Ms. Murray, I'll let you start. Can you tell us like why you came up with this, what your goal was with your students?
Sure. Hi. So this was our culminated project for our volume unit, and we had done a lot of manipulatives and paper and pencil measurement and things like that, but wanted to do something fun and more engaging, give them a chance to work in groups together, get creative, a little bit messy. And we use the progression scale, and this is really hitting up there in the 4.0 range, which is, you know, even more of a benefit.
Thank you. Bonus points for mentioning math progressions and our progression scales. All right. So I have some students here that we, today we did some reflecting on the activities. So I have some questions here I'm going to ask them and then give them a chance to talk about their learning a little bit. So we'll start with Makai in the orange. He gets bonus points for written or orange shirt. What did you learn by doing this project? I don't want to be painful.
That math isn't hard if you're doing it with people. Math could be fun and how to work with people, and that I can do big times, big multiplication by myself, and how to make stuff out of boxes.
And follow-up question, which of those was the most challenging?
The time off tables.
The big multiplication? Thank you.
Makai, is one of these animals yours?
So that's my fault. Theirs is on the board. Theirs went home before I captured them. They snuck out of the book. So theirs are here on the board. This class hadn't sent them home, so I got them. So this, shout out to Ms. Swanson's class, so their animals are represented here. Next up is Hayden, all right? And she gets bonus points for having a vintage Marvin shirt. They don't look like that anymore. Do you like projects like this more than doing math worksheets or workbook pages, and why?
Yes, I would rather do a project more than a worksheet. I like working in a group because I like working together.
Are there challenges to working together?
Yeah.
I connect to that. All right, next up, we have Carlos. Carlos is next. All right, how is learning like this through projects different than other classroom learning?
Because you can pass time with your friends, you can remember more things, and you can help each other, and it can stick on your head longer.
What stuck in your head longer? What parts?
Like the math and the centimeters and...
The measurement and the math formula? All right, this is your quiz. Do you remember the volume formula?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Do you want to say it?
Length times width times height.
Good job, Ms. Murray. All right, and our last question is Mercy. Can you tell us about the process you went through as you all were doing this?
We had to agree on an animal. We had to get the boxes. We had to gather the boxes we needed. We had to measure each box, had to multiply to find the volume, then add it all together. We had to learn how to wrap a box. We had to wrap the boxes, glue them together, then assemble the boxes to make them look like animals.
And I see some papers here. Did you all have to do those as well?
Yes.
Can you explain a little bit about what those are?
It's, it's, um... We measured the boxes before we put the wrapping on, and then we had, actually, because...
Yeah?
Go ahead. We got the answers right here, and then we multiplied them. And then we had, after that, after all, we multiplied, and then we had add and multiply, and then we had got the big number.
All right, you got the big number, which is the whole volume for your animal. All right, good job. Thank you. All right, do we have any questions from you all?
Yes. How can you see yourself using something like that, like what you've learned in your everyday life? Like, what could you do? Ask if you've been able to do it.
I can make like a skyscraper out of a box.
Architect in the future.
Yeah.
I asked them earlier, I'm blank on what you said you wanted to do when you were... A football star, what was your backup plan though?
Basketball.
I like that, yeah.
You're confident in this area. Any other questions?
Now, I know the math part was hard. That's a given. But in making your, your animals here, what was the hardest part of that?
The hardest part of making the animals, like putting them together, was like... Okay.
Well, did yours fall apart where yours went?
Mine, no, the...
Hey, 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 don't tell me you do that. We had a leg fall off and a wing fall off.
Mine didn't.
Yours didn't, okay.
Yeah.
And she's a future surgeon, so it's important. But don't fall apart.
Yeah. The hardest part was like trying to, like, the boxes, the boxes, like the length and stuff, like how, like, because my group, I know we wanted to kind of make it look realistic, a little realistic, so you could know where anyone was, which that was hard. But, but the experience of just working together as a group and to, you know, thanks for boxes and wrapping them, because I got to learn how to wrap a present, so if any of you guys did.
Which one is yours?
Mine is this one.
And it's clear that everyone wanted it, so go ahead and share.
I want to hear guesses, huh? Does anyone have a guess?
Is it a horse?
No.
Close.
Close.
Big chance to get two dollars.
No.
Before you go on vacation, you have to alpack out two.
Is it a llama?
Alpack, alpack! It's weird.
One of the two, yes.
We don't... I know we came on a llama because it's made the llama, so.
Which one is yours?
Mine is the ape over here.
The ape? And that was banana, you see, anyway? I thought it was like odd nose for an ape. And then yours is up, is yours up there?
Yes.
Which one's yours?
Mine, mine is the parakeet over there, like...
The queen.
Yeah.
They're better.
Yeah. The one up there, the one that's white and red, it kept falling apart too much, like the bee, the flower, it kept falling apart too much.
And then is yours up there?
Yeah.
All right.
Mine sits right up there, and we didn't know which one to pick, an abigator or a busy, so we just went with the abigator. We called it alley. And then the head kept coming down, so we had to sleep a little, and then we had to put some fish up there.
For food.
We don't know what type of fish.
Now, something odd happened, some adaptations. Our cheetah went through phases of being a giraffe.
I can explain.
And you have the next one, okay.
See, the cheetah slash giraffe, their leg came off. So mine is supposed for that one. I asked the, I asked the group that was making it to clarify if it was a giraffe or cheetah, because I also thought it was a giraffe. They said it was a cheetah. I didn't believe that. It looks like a giraffe. But I'm gonna go with what they said. Let's see.
Was it just this group or were there other, were there more?
Yeah.
So this is just Ms. Murray's class here. So every class of fifth grade had it. That's it.
Oh, that's so awesome.
And everyone got to do their own?
Yeah, it's small groups, yeah. And we've challenged third grade, so we had animals just running them up that they do perimeter and area, so we're going to hope for some enclosures next year.
Well, it's clear that when you take the idea of volume and cubic measures and all of that, which can be a little bit dry, you know, it's clear that you find a way to engage kids and make sure the kids are experiencing joy in the process. Pretty impressive. Thank you.
Will the family members of our Marvin Stars stand to be recognized as well?
Thank you.
We want you.
Thank you.
Oh, I did want to shout out, I'm sorry I'm interrupting, but that's artwork from Marvin as well. Our, the wings, every grade level did a wing, a series of wings in art during Hispanic Heritage Month. We actually had a big Hispanic Heritage Month this year. Kids got to vote every class, every day on, they had music from different Hispanic countries and got to vote on their favorite. Peru beat out the US right at the end. So we had lots of fun. So I wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Kmetz and Ms. Shae for organizing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We will move on to 1.6. I'd like to report that the Board of Education met in closed session on October 12th, 2023 for the purpose of a discussion of personnel agenda items. 1.7 is public comments. I have not received any public comments, so we will move on to our president's report. So our Rittner High School cheerleaders, congratulations to the Rittner High School varsity cheerleaders who are going to state. The Huskies will compete in the state championship after earning second place in the co-ed division of the Missouri Cheerleading Coaches Association St. Louis Regional Competition that was held on October 8th at Lindenwood University. The Huskies face fierce competition at the regional level with their final score narrowly missing first place to Sykeson High School squad. Points are earned for choreography, synchronization, stunt difficulty, and overall presentation. The state competition will take place on December 9th through the 10th at Southeast Missouri State University. We cannot be more proud of our students and the coaches, and congratulations and good luck in the state competition. I would like to take a moment to, we in the Rittner School District, we experienced a loss today, so I'd like to take a moment to honor the memory of one of our cherished, longtime Rittner School District teachers. Ms. Janine Mylum Haynes, she passed away yesterday after a long courageous battle with cancer. She spent her entire 27-year educational career in our district, serving the Marion community. She took great pride in spending the vast majority of her career preparing her fifth graders for middle school in that same classroom at Marion Elementary. Her unwavering commitment to education was a source of inspiration to all of us. She generously shared her knowledge, boundless energy, and steadfast commitment to educational excellence for her students and with her colleagues. So tonight, as we continue to work, do this important work that she dedicated her life to, we want to pause to reflect on her impact to our students, her colleagues, and to the community. And we want to remember her deep, remember her with deep respect and gratitude for her invaluable contributions to the field of education. Our thoughts are most definitely with her family, her friends, her students, and the colleagues, and with all those whose lives she touched. May we observe a moment of silence and honor Ms. Janine Mylum Haynes. Please keep her family and your thoughts during this difficult time, as well as the staff in our district. Ms. Mylum Haynes serves, had a special place in many people's hearts throughout our district and community, so we just ask that you just keep everyone in your thoughts. We will move on to 2.2, our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Board members, I would like to take a moment to recognize Christina Andrade Mella. Last fall, Rittner High School teacher, Ms. Melly, was named the 54th Missouri State Teacher of the Year. During this past year, Ms. Melly has had so many amazing experiences and opportunities. Tonight, I'd like to invite Christina to share a couple of words, if she wishes, about some of her top experiences as she's concluded her run as the Missouri State Teacher of the Year. Thank you for being here, Christina.
Thank you very much. Absolutely. I was able to be here a little bit earlier tonight. I left the husband with both babies for bedtime, so it's a little late in time. I think that this year has really been both very affirming and very broadening that a lot of the time that I've been able to spend traveling as Missouri State Teacher of the Year, meeting with other State Teachers of the Year, working with other districts in the area and other leaders, it's really shown me how much we're doing right in Rittner and how valued and respected our students and our staff are. I think that you don't really know what you have at home until you go other places. And even seeing all the innovative things and getting a chance to learn from other districts, coming back home, I've been able to see, this is something my colleagues down the hall are doing. This is something our school board is working on. These are things that our administrators are experimenting with, they're trying. So I think that through all of those experiences this year, it's also really been a chance to recognize how deeply important home it is. I think some of the most, some of the most interesting things or some of the most uplifting things have come from moments with students. Getting to travel to Washington DC with several of our future teachers in August was a very unexpected and very sudden honor. I think that we had six days from start to finish to plan that and to get minors onto a plane and to jump into a Washington DC. There was one phone that was broken about two hours before we got onto that plane, but fortunately Tark is open early, and so we were able to get everything together. But I think seeing, seeing education being honored in that way and having people who are going to be teachers see education have a place in the White House and see teachers be uplifted, watching them have that experience, I think was one of my favorite moments, being Teacher of the Year. I know that as our new Missouri State Teacher of the Year, Greg Kessler, only a short drive away in Patosie, it wouldn't be very fair to have two back-to-back from Rittner, I guess. As he takes the helm, beginning in January, his formal term will begin. I know that he's going to have phenomenal experiences. I know that I'll be able to continue working with him and mentoring him. But I think through it all, it's really just been an honor to represent our community and both take learning, things that we do here, and share it with others across the country, and also bring back learning and bring back things to try or bring back ideas. I think it's just been an incredible year. There's no way, I could talk about it probably for several weeks, and I'd really be in trouble for the bedtimes I miss. But thank you all. There's been a lot of adjustments. There's been a lot of paperwork, I'm very sure, so all of the staff at Central Office. I very much owe Janie Sims a debt of gratitude for all of the substitute entries that she has made for me and all of my colleagues and administrators supporting me. So thank you very much for the year and just all the affirmation for the work that we do.
Thank you, Christina, not only for representing the district and the community and your home the way that you did, but also, board members, Ms. Melly's attendance in her classroom, balancing being in the classroom while also being the State Teacher of the Year. You've had by far the best attendance of a person who has been balancing both responsibilities. In Rittner, we've been blessed to have a couple of opportunities to compare Ms. Melly to. So she's balanced both of those responsibilities, been with her kids in her classroom as much as possible, and also, board members, Ms. Melly has also been pushing the State Board of Education, because there has been a teacher seat on the Board of Education that was approved in 2019 but has sat vacant until Ms. Melly. And you are working on getting seated on the State Board of Education. Could you share a little bit about that?
I am. The, there was a statute passed, it's actually a Missouri law, that there is a teacher seat reserved on the State Board of Education for a practicing educator, in the same way that we have a student board member on the State Board of Education, right? That the more voices that you have in a decision, the better decision you can make. You want as many different perspectives represented as possible. So that seat unfortunately has never been filled. That statute expires in 2025. And so as part of, as part of many other State Teacher of the Year's work, they often retain a seat on the Board of Education for that one year. Missouri is set up differently, that it's a separate process. So early this year, I applied. I've been waiting to hear back. Sometime this month was the hope.
Well, thank you for pushing the issue and making sure there's a Rittner voice in that room. Congratulations on your accomplishment.
Thank you so much.
Board members, we have another special guest with us tonight. Pallavi Chawra is here with us. So Pallavi is a postdoctoral researcher through Washington University. She's a part of the Translational Fellows Program, which is a partnership between WashU, SLU, and Harris She's a part of the Translational Fellows Program, which is a partnership between WashU, SLU, and Harris State. Pallavi has been with us now for over a month, and she's in the district every Thursday in my office, working on some important questions that we have Pallavi getting into and pulling data around. And also, as a part of our work with the Success Ready Students Network, I'm a member of the 12-person Dashboard Committee, responsible for creating the new state dashboard that districts will be using. So Pallavi and I take that meeting every Thursday at 1:00, and Pallavi is going to be absolutely critical in helping us to create our district dashboard to represent our performance to the state. So Pallavi, thank you for being here tonight. Welcome to Ridner. Board members, last thing that I have, as you shared, as Lisa had shared, we had our pre-candidate forum. Ridner residents that are interested in running for the April 2, 2024 Ridner Board of Ed election need to file for candidacy at the St. Louis County Board of Elections, 725 Northwest Plaza Drive in St. Anne. Filing period for the April 2 election opens the 5th of December and closes at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 26. On that first day, there will be a lottery for ballot position. Two positions are on the ballot. They're the three-year terms of Lisa Glover Jones and Vanessa Enriquez Pimlo. Those terms expire April 2024. Statutory law in Missouri requires that candidates be US citizens, at least 24, be resident taxpayers of the district, and have resided in Missouri for one year immediately preceding the election. Candidates must not be delinquent in paying state income tax, personal property tax, municipal tax, or real property taxes on their place of residence. Board members serve three-year terms and are not paid for their service. Candidates, Board members, as you know, will receive an informational packet after filing for the election. I meant to say, as you know, the presentation that was shared today will be forwarded to the two potential candidates that were with us this afternoon before they get to them tomorrow. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kilbride. We will move on to 2.3, our student representative report. Ms. Hope Hope.
Hi. So I just wanted to say that transitions between classes, last time I said that it wasn't going as well because there was a lot of traffic jams and stuff. I'm happy to report, the traffic jams have stopped. It has been so much easier for kids to get to class on time and stuff, and it's just so much easier. There's a better flow. I think it's because they opened up the cafeteria for us to walk through, and then freshmen are also now used to the building. I also wanted to say that I have not noticed any fights this year. Normally, there's a few fights every month or so. That was happening when we first came back from COVID this year. I have not really noticed any fights. The biggest that I've noticed is there was this huge yelling match, and that was because we were in a hallway that is popular for fights. But otherwise, there has been no fights that I have noticed, at least, and usually word travels around. And I think that's partially because Paul Burke gives us something to look forward to, and it really releases the tension. I have noted, so I did ask some kids about the cleanliness, like you guys asked. A lot of them have been saying that it still grows around the school, and I think it's partially because they haven't noticed the results the next day. They focus on the immediate results. Part of it is also that the students aren't taking care of the building as well as they should. We've had at one time where I was walking to March 20 practice, which is at the parking lot behind Schnucks, right? And there was trash on the grounds because they were just going out of their way to throw it on the ground. And I think that that should be addressed to the students, that not only is it the custodians, it's also on the students to help keep the building clean. But it is also our responsibility to take care of our own trash. And then I talked to Dr. Kilbride about the food, and he told me that they are working on the Oleg Park, yeah. And I'm really excited about that because I know a lot of kids were getting really tired of just having chicken sandwiches and cheeseburgers, and so I'm really excited about that. I think we should maybe publicize that a little more, that that is coming soon.
Thank you. We will move on to 2.4, MSBA/NSBA report. Mrs. Enriquez Pimlo.
Good evening, Board members. So were we, did we want to share anything about this weekend now?
There's time in December at the work session.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. So I'll just say, we went to the Kansas City MSBA conference this year, and we'll hear more about that. We can play the video. I don't know if I should carry on. If it's, if it doesn't work.
What does MSBA stand?
Missouri School Board Association. Well, I don't think there's any other updates outside of that.
Van Deven informed the State Board of Education members during their October meeting. Dr. Van Deven has over 30 years of experience, including seven years as Missouri's Education Commissioner, serving from 2015 to 2017, then returning to the position in 2019.
I have worked for a Democratic governor. I have worked for a Republican governor, and I have found that when we focus on students, it should be a nonpartisan issue. As I mentioned, it's not the political choice, it's the right choice.
In a statement released that same day, MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall said, "Commissioner Van Deven's announcement of her resignation at the end of the fiscal year gives us pause to celebrate the work of a transformational leader whose dedication to Missouri's children has been unwavering and inspiring. She provided guidance and leadership to Missouri's K-12 systems during some of our state's most challenging times, staying laser-focused on ensuring a quality education for every child. The commissioner has been an outspoken advocate for our teachers and has promoted strong local governance and improved investments in programs to safeguard our children. We remain committed to continuing the legacy of excellence she has fostered and look forward to working with her until her departure next year. For the past few years, Missouri school districts have seen an influx of funding, courtesy of the federal government's response to the pandemic and other sources. As a result, education budgets benefited, offering support to districts across the state. MSBA Senior Finance Director Linda Quinley says that as some of that funding goes away, it's important for district leaders and communities to recognize and address the inevitable challenges ahead."
We are growing more and more concerned about the fiscal funding cliff that we know we've all been watching for, but is now actually here. We are looking at the end of our SRF funds. We also know that the DSE waivers are coming to an end. And then we have state revenues down significantly because of the tax cuts from two years ago that are continuing to roll in year after year. We also know that the enrollment and attendance numbers have remained low. So collectively, all of those things are going to impact the future opportunities for revenues for all of our schools across Missouri.
And it's never too early to start planning for your school district's next budget. Budget planning is a meticulous process that requires a thorough understanding of a school's financial needs, priorities, and constraints. A school finance webinar series hosted by Linda is starting at the end of this month. Get all of the school finance information you can use from the comfort of your home or office.
Our webinar series around budget planning and getting the budget to the finish line is really what we want to help people do, is intended for our brand-new finance leaders, whether they be superintendents, bookkeepers, finance officers. They're also intended for people who've been doing this work for a little while but want to figure out how to make their budget a more usable document for their board, their community, and their administration. So anyone who's involved in the budgeting process inside the district is welcome to participate in this and hopefully gain some insights, some tools, and some tips to really present a great budget to the board in the spring.
Topics include making and communicating the budget plan, projecting current year's actuals to springboard next year's budget, and more. Visit the MSBA website for dates for each meeting and registration information. And last, but certainly not least, thank you to all who hosted and attended MSBA's Fall Regional Meetings. Meetings were held in all of the state's 17 regions as attendees gathered to network, learn, and share with fellow public school leaders to ensure all students succeed. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meetings, and we'll see you in December for the next MSBA Board Report.
Just a couple reminders that session starts January 3, and that will also start up our legislative action at the committee, so there's that. And then there will be a school finance workshop in Columbia on February 15, and the registration for that will be coming soon. So that will be like an in-person workshop for MSBA's sponsor.
I know we're going to report out in December on the learning that board members did participate in over this past, from last weekend. There is talk, I actually did get an opportunity to attend one of the budget presentations, and there was actually a conversation that was mentioned about looking at the formulary. So looking forward to learning more about that. We're going to move on to 2.5, Special School District Report. Mr. Robine.
We don't have our next meeting until December 4, I think, is the next governing council meeting. But I will say that what we have been shared with as governing council from the updates coming out of SSD is they are continuing their investigation. And I do have to say that we give them a lot of credit because this is the most tight-lipped investigation I have ever seen. There's very little information coming out. So when people say, "I don't know," they really mean they don't know.
Thank you. Move on to our business items. 3.1, construction updates. Mr. Dwight Lindahl.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm filling in for Mike Smith. He was not feeling well today. So I want to cover up first the vision and the mission. As Mike says, we can't meet those without having the appropriate spaces for learning. And those spaces should provide the best physical environment for learning to occur, and try to make all district schools provide consistent and equitable environments. So tonight, I'm only going to talk about Ridner High School track replacement. So the track is used by students, staff, and the community on a daily basis. Many people from the community walk on the track every evening, every day, and weekend. Track has not been resurfaced in more than 15 years, therefore it's past due. Did make some minor repairs a few years ago, but we're talking about a complete resurfacing of that. And so it's now in need of replacement due to age and wear. The material is thin, and it can be dangerous for athletes and lead to injuries. We have spots that cause pooling of water, and there's a dip in the surface over towards the concession, towards the, towards the Far Baseball Gardens and, can't think of the house.
Rock House.
Rock House, thank you. So here you can see some examples of cracks in the surface and worn areas in the surface. So Mike talked to Vernon Jones. They're a highly reputable contractor for school track installation and replacement. They participate in community pricing, meaning that competitive bidding's already been completed. And this is an example from Cardinal Ritter. So they have posed the following costs to remove and replace the track surface, $259,690. That includes a $30,000 allowance for asphalt repairs. As they remove the surface, there may be repairs, we're pretty sure there will be repairs. And so there's a $30,000 allowance in there. It could be more, or it could be less, and we could save on that allowance. That would also include crack, fill, and seal the asphalt between the track and the home bleachers, which is an alternate for $8,270. So the total for that would be $267,960. And that's on our existing six-lane track. There was also a conversation about the possibility of installing an eight-lane track. This would allow Ridner High School to host track meets. The installation for an eight-lane track would be $576,900. We would still want to fill the cracks and seal the asphalt between the track and the home bleachers. Because the track would take up more space, we would need to install a new, remove the existing fence and install a new four-foot tall fence around the track at $63,800. And then in order to host track meets, we would need to rebuild the high-jump, long-dump, and pole vault runways in concrete for $79,500. So a total of $728,570 for an eight-lane track. And again, remove and replace the six-lane track would be $267,960. So those are the two costs there. So our recommendation was to remove and replace the existing six-lane track. I think it meets the needs of our community, students, and athletes. The track coach did give permission for this work to start in the spring so that the new surface is ready for use in August. Vernon Jones is presently booked up for next summer already. And so that's what we're trying to get this approved and scheduled and get upon their calendar. So next month, Mike will be recommending the quote to replace and resurface the six-lane track for $267,960. And of course, we'll look for feedback from the board as to which direction we go, six or eight-lane track. I'll try to answer any questions you have. I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Board members, if I could fill in a little bit here. So this wasn't originally part of the plan, but through conversation, the feedback was that the condition of the track was becoming somewhat dangerous for athletes in terms of injuries, shin splints, those kind of things. So then that upped the urgency around it. And the initial thinking was to replace the six-lane, six-lane track. But then the thinking was, questions were asked about the future. What would be the value of starting to host track meets at Ritter High School, and could we do that with a six-lane track? And the answer is no, because it doesn't meet the criteria. So then that's where the additional work that Mike and Dwight did to go out and do some additional exploring of what would be the costs involved for an eight-lane track, which would allow for this spring, because I think the original thinking was for spring work so that the track would be available for this track season of the spring. That was the initial intent. The summer is full, so there's some urgency in moving forward somewhat quickly. But there were enough questions that have surfaced around six-lane versus eight-lane. For example, if the decision would be to move ahead with a six-lane track, then could two lanes be added onto that six-lane track if we wanted to expand in the future? We're still exploring the cost. I believe that's not possible, but I'm not 100% sure, and we're looking into that question. We want to be able to follow up with you. You know, the bottom line is, all of this would be, it was not budgeted this year, so the idea of taking the additional costs of the eight-lane would be a stretch for us this year. Wanted to get this in front of the board. We could have the conversation if this is the direction the board would want to go for the eight-lane. We would have to budget next year for that to figure out if we're going to do that, what would we not do because we couldn't sustain the additional costs and continue to do things the way we're doing things. There are some other costs that we anticipate this next year. We anticipate an increase in some of our medical premiums based on the experience of last year, which is going to be an additional cost that we're going to have to figure out how we navigate it. We do experience that we're going to have to replace the roof deck at Wyland, which is going to be an additional cost that will be coming out of our balances. And we also do expect that we're going to have to do some furniture replacement in some of our buildings with a specific focus on Ritter High School. So just wanted to put that out there. The idea of the additional cost of the eight-lane right now, I believe, would be very difficult for us to handle. Although, long-term, do see that as the better option to be able to expand the track program at the high school.
If we have this, the resurfacing done, that'll be done still during spring break? Yes, I'm not sure why Mike put August in there, and that's what I said, but yeah.
That was a little confusing.
Yeah, the thought was is that we could get it done in the spring, and most of the track season, they would be able to use it. The track coach talked to Mike about being able to use other sites, that he would be willing to do whatever he needed to do in order to get the track replaced this spring. So I believe most of the track season would be on the new, on the new track.
Okay, and if we waited till December business meeting, would that still give us time to get that slot?
Yeah, well, as long as somebody else doesn't, as long as they don't get scheduled out of this. But so we don't know what they have, what else they have in the pipeline, or who else they've given proposals to. So it's like anything else, I mean, first come, first served, whoever, we just don't know what else they have out there. They just, we do, Mike does know that they're pretty scheduled in the summer, and they were thrilled to be able to, you know, for the option to do it in the spring, they were thrilled. Because they like, you know, they've looked at our track several times, they're ready to do it. I would, I would like to, to have a conversation, if we could, at a work session, about the eight-lane track and how we could work that into our budget and everything. I know we all ask, where's, where's this money coming from? And that's, that's important. So the eight-lane track would be a budget in another fiscal year. So I think we could, we could look at when we would want to do that, which would be a good option for us, we'd have a discussion about that. As far as repairing the track we have, I mean, it's just like driving on ball tires. It's time to do something before we, we aren't doing anything anymore. So I guess my thought would be that we should, we should move ahead, move ahead with repairs to the track, and then discuss, and have a plan for the eight-lane addition, or the two-lane addition to make the eight-lane.
I guess I'm confused. I thought that the thought was it would be, almost be impossible to add two lanes onto it down the road. So we're saying spend $300,000 now, and then have another conversation for another year or so, and then take this up, and then spend $700,000 for an eight-lane?
So we have not confirmed that they couldn't add a two-lane. We don't think it's likely, but we have not, we're not 100% sure on that. So, you know, again, pushing, pushing the conversation and the decision in December. My gut says there's not going to be a lot of schools that decide to put a track in in the spring. So, you know, it might be worth the risk to wait, and so we can make sure that, you know, whether we can add two more, or whether it would have to be ripped off again and eight lanes put down at the same time. I think it also depends on what the timing of that is. I mean, if you wait a few years to add a couple lanes, then you're going to have a different age surface. So it might be, you know, I think those are the questions that we need to get answered.
And we'll also get answers to Dr. Thomas's question about making track repairs. The track has been skim coated so many times that the track is only skim coated. There's really not much base material left. So a skim coat is about a quarter inch over top. And so the idea that we'd spend additional money to patch, as we've done before, I don't know that we'll get a lot from that, from that either.
And that was a question I had as well. Can we, can we do six lanes and then add two, and then say, round numbers, $300,000 more, we do two? Or, or is it all ripped off and then all done? Those, those are why I want to, I would like to ask, we have it on our work session. Give these guys a month to find out all these answers, and then we can come up with a good fiscal plan because, yeah, you're right, I don't want to spend $270,000 too, just see it ripped up in a year or so.
Right.
Because that's, that's just like taking money and throwing it out the window. But I think we do have to, have to have a come-up of a plan. I think we're all pretty much in the same mindset that in the future somewhere, we want to have an eight-lane track. The coach did tell us, they had over 100 kids, boys and girls coming out for track this spring. I mean, 100 kids, I haven't seen that many since a long time. So I think it's, it's the next great step for us in our athletic program, but I think we have to be really mindful of our responsibility fiscally as well. So if we, this is a great report that gives us more information, but I brought up a lot more questions. So if we could have that conversation and get some details in December, I think that'd be great.
I'd also be interested, because I know he had mentioned about having groups, like outside of school groups, that would be possibly able to rent it from us, kind of like the auditorium, and like run things. And so he had mentioned that that's actually a great income source. So I'd like to understand, you know, is that one track meet a year? Is it two track meets? And what is that, that we could actually do? So, you know, like after, what does that number look like? And after so many years, it made its money back, you know what I mean? So just trying to find out. One other question I have is that when we talked about the eight-lane, we talked about the light pole that would possibly be have, have been removed. Is that not the case anymore?
So that was back in 2016 when we looked at that upgrade to a whole more field. There were two light stanchions that had to be pushed back towards the rock road. In this situation, they don't have to be moved. And in the eight-lane, it's just the fence that's in front of the bleachers has to get pushed back because the lanes would be right in the middle of that fence. Lights don't have.
Okay.
To build off of what Jennifer is referencing, the projected budget, anticipated budget in regards to trying to host track meets, there's also certain amount of supplies that are necessary? Like right now, if we were to look at the athletics department's budget that they have allotted for track and field, could it even accommodate that? Do we even have that type of equipment to accommodate hosting track meets? So what's the cost of doing that as well in that projected budget? For me, that's the type of information I would like to have, so that we're saying we're going to anticipate that as track meet, we could potentially make $30,000 that we would host. I'm just saying random numbers, I don't know. But how much would we, you can, I mean, it may generate a lot, but.
That's what he told us.
How much money, how long would it take us before, or the district, before they would recoup some of that?
Right.
So.
Thank you for being willing to have the conversation. This was not on the radar until the comment was made about potential impact and injuries to kids, and when the comment was made that about halfway through the season, he starts to limit the amount of time that students spend on that track because it's like running on work. That's what bumped up the urgency around the session.
So as, just to follow a question, I don't know if we know, but so are students then going to other tracks to, like are they going to other campuses to practice? Or are they just?
No, not that I know of. Like all of the track meets currently are all away.
Right.
And the initial conversation was, we just need to improve our practice surface, which would be the six-lane surface, and, and they believed, the coach and the department believed that an eight-lane was just never an option. So they weren't advocating for the eight-lane to start hosting track meets. What they do is they do, they don't, you know, we don't rent time at Pattonville, nor U.C. nor these other places. They just try to limit the amount of time on the track, kids spend some time in the grass, and so on.
I would also say, as a parent who had a child that ran track, they would also just run in the community, like on the sidewalks and stuff, or else they'll go to one of the other schools, middle schools, elementary schools, to utilize the gym on days. Or sometimes they'll run through the hallways in the high school as well.
Way back when, instead of just having big invitational meets where you had 20 or 30 schools there, you would have dual or tri-meets, and we would host those. So you'd only have two or three schools. Now they've moved to the model of every weekend, or whatever it is, Friday and Saturday, you go to an invitation. Thus 10, 20, 30 schools or more would be there. So back at that time, a six-lane track for three teams was fine. Now it's not because you have such volume that we have to have, we would have to have a big track to host and invitation.
And more than just the track.
And more than just the track. We'd have to have, you know, the jump pits and all that done as well. So, I mean, and as AAU, I think that's what the coach was saying, some of the other groups, they would be big invitationals, so there'd be a lot of people there. That would be 10, 20, 30, or more teams that would come from around the Midwest, two, three states away, that would be able to come here for a meet. But it's, how much does it cost us in that regard to spend money to start making money on those kind of meets? That's something down the road, that's something that we couldn't do this next year. So in regards to the eight-lane track, we have time because the coach could set up an invitational because the track meet season is already set. They know where they're going on what days and who they're running against. So at the earliest, this would be a year from now. And that's if they could hurry up and get on the schedule for the suburban areas. So we have, we have time to figure out how to fund an eight-lane track and all the essentials that would go with it. If you've gone out and walked around the track, or as an athlete, run around the track, you feel that you need a solid surface that is even. Right now, you could twist an ankle or worse because of the dips of the track. That takes it all the way down to the asphalt. So they would, they would be ripping it all up down to the asphalt, and we doing that, which is more than we've, we've ever really done since that track was put in. The lifespan is, the track is there. And we're taking not only the rubber copy, but we're going down to the subsurface and starting rebuilding all of the track.
This may be totally out of line in regards to the usage of the track, but when we think about the amount of community that does use the track, is it unheard of to do some type of community campaign for some of the funding?
I don't know, I've never, we've never talked about that.
That's a good point.
Yeah. I'm not sure. I can look into that and just see what other districts have done such a thing. Kelly Sports Services comes to mind. There are districts that will partner with Kelly Sports Services, such as Parkway, where they'll sell off advertising rights on scoreboards and so on that generates funds for districts. When athletics and activities had explored that option, it wasn't, it didn't make sense financially for us to do that. But we can look into community campaigns, just what districts have done something for community fundraising like that, that would be outside of a bond issue or something like that.
Just because I don't know, when is track season?
Spring. Across the country, it's fall, track is spring.
Probably start winding, started in March. We might start practicing officially, like getting together and running maybe late February.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think we are, do you know somewhere? There's still next.
Yeah.
We are moving to 3.2, bond issuance and refunding.
Logan, as we discussed last week, we priced bonds today, and I'll pass out the summary. Becky Esrock with Stiefel is here to go over the summary of the pricing today.
Awesome, thank you Dwight. I'm Becky Esrock with Stiefel, I work with Lorenzo Boyd. We had the privilege of pricing the district's bonds today. That consisted of 16.61 million. A portion of that is the 2020 voter authorization, the remaining voter authorization from that election. And the other portion is refinancing purely for savings. So that is no extension of the district's debt, it was done purely for interest savings. We were excited by the response from the market. We received over 62 million in orders for the district's bonds. So especially with how the market's been performing lately, interest rates have kind of been all over the place, and investors have been a little afraid. And so I think this is a testament to the district's credit and all the work that the district did, Dwight and his group, ahead of time just to put this into the market. We had a variety of investors, retail, and overall, the interest rate was right around 3.56%. So the project fund monies, you'll receive a project fund deposit on December 5th at closing in the amount of approximately $10 million. And interest savings over the life of this bond issue will be approximately $315,000. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but overall, it's a little bit of luck in the bond market, and we got lucky over the last week that interest rates have come down after rising really for the last two months. So we got a little bit of reprieve, and we were able to take advantage of that today.
I'd like to clarify a couple of things I talked about last week. The numbers that I was using were from about a month and a half ago when we first started the process. And so I said that we were going to save about $375,000 gross. Again, that was when the market was, the rates were a little lower. Last month and a half, they've gone up. And if you look in the middle column, or the left column there, November 6th, so even at the beginning of the week, they thought the rates would be a little higher. And then today, we thought we'd have a true interest cost of $315,000. And then today, we thought we'd have a, a true interest cost of three point six. And we ended up at less than that at three point five six three. So even though rates went down this morning, then they went back up again in the afternoon after we had priced. So the market is really crazy. The other thing I wanted to clarify was, last week I said, these were going to be a ten year maturity instead of twenty that we usually do. These are only a six year maturity. They will be paid off in March of 2029. So this is great. And so we're saving, as Becky said, about three hundred and fifteen thousand gross. And we're just really happy with, with what we, what we got today. The, the time is awesome, that is great.
Yeah.
It's a testament to the district and all the work that you all have done to put yourself in this position.
Assess value didn't hurt.
No. We'll take what we can get.
Right.
So Dequinda uploaded into community the, the new resolution that the board would approve with the actual numbers in there. She's also uploaded the buy and purchase agreement. Everything else in there is the same. That's all the legal documents that, that myself and Dequinda and Mrs. Belvedere Jones signed tonight if the board approves the bonds and the bond resolution. So that's the resolution? Correct. I don't, but do they need to?
Can we just do the link where you approve the resolution?
Just approve the resolution, they don't need to say the whole resolution.
I would say they're
Say the whole resolution, please. Okay, so I move that we authorize the direct issuance, sale and delivery of general obligation refunding and improvement bonds, which is the Missouri Direct Deposit Program, Series 2023, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of an interest on the bonds as they become due and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection there. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
I'll take the easy one. Mrs. Lomis?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Garden?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Enrique Espejo?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the dinner was nice, too.
First slide you want to go on next.
That is awesome.
We will move on to three point three, personnel recommendations document.
Evening board members.
Good evening.
Here to present, I have one through nineteen. I want any questions you may have and ultimately asking for your approval.
Just say number two, happy for but not thrilled with.
You know, that's Dwight's fault, by the way.
On eighteen and nineteen, how does that work as far as with that role? Like what are the qualifications? Because I wasn't understanding, I don't realize we had that.
We actually started to look for these positions over a year ago when we were looking for additional supports for students. And in, in this regard, the qualification was high school diploma, interested in supporting students with math. These, these are two Ringer graduates who are college students. And they'll work with high school staff in supporting students that are selected. Handy during the day, but there may be some after school options where there would be some assistance and supervision as well.
It could be virtual as well.
Yes. And essentially, they're gonna be, provide some training through high school staff and provide some training, providing expectations.
And the president, if there are no other questions from the board, I would move that we accept recommendations, one through nineteen, as presented.
Second. Mrs. Lomis?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Garden?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Enrique Espejo?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
We will move on to three point four, our Board of Education Self-Evaluation. So board members, we had our first quarter board self-eval. We're asking for feedback. We have some individuals that filled out. So if you did not get a chance to fill this out and there is something that you want to give feedback on, please jump in so we can kind of make sure we have your voice in this conversation. Looking over the questions. Question two is, didn't see anything there. If we look at question four, the board ensures that the district practices are aligned with governing policies and are reviewed on an as needed basis. There was some feedback that said, not sure if we have a good process for doing this on a regular basis. So if I want to give a little bit more feedback on that?
I think that's what I said. You know, we, we did reports, you know, and, and we're not part of any of that except listening. We, it's not interactive, there's not a venue where we can sit and discuss. It's brought out to us. And that's it. Then a slide shows up as our questions. So that's a lot of information. And I think maybe we could, we can have a good or better process to be a little bit more interactive so that we can, we can feel like we're a part of the process, ask more questions, have a discussion maybe, instead of just reporting. Just throwing it out, I don't know.
So when you're saying that, are you meaning it from the perspective of interaction, interactive in regards to governing policies or just interactive and making sure that we're reviewing the reports?
Uh, well, part of reviewing the report would be being able to maybe have a deeper understanding of it and maybe asking the authors questions of why and where we're going and everything like that. Report is good to tell us where we are right now, but then what? Put it on the shelf and say, check that box, we did that? And we make it, we, we need to take the next step. It should be part of the process of what is the next step and how we can gain an understanding and then maybe have an action associated with that.
And I can see that in regards to the program reports and things that we get. I guess for me, I'm looking at the question in regards to governing policies and sure the district practices are aligning with governing policies and are reviewed on an as needed basis. For me, I'm viewing that question more in regards to like the reports that we get or the information that we've received. How do, are those practices and the actions and steps that we're taking, do they align with our policies that we have in place? And for me, when I answer that question, I said, I think that we're doing this, but for me as an individual board member, I feel like I need to do a better job of referencing the policies so that I can engage in those type of questions and dialogue. Because I ask questions, but they're not always related back to the policies, right?
I guess I go back to the discussion is the important part. If we just have a report with no discussion, then we didn't, we didn't get anywhere.
All in all, when we talk about the policies section of our questions, I feel like we do, I feel like the district is aligned with our policies, like makes practices and decisions based on our policies. And I feel like, and this is just all in general, all questions that relate to policy, knock it out one. But they, I feel like Dr. Kilbride gets and Dequinda, Dequinda gets the information about changes to policies that would be good for us to look at. And we look at those, but sometimes I don't feel like we look at other ones as, like we were, like we don't review them. Like when I look at this and I think reviewed on an, it's truly on an as needed basis, but are we making sure that we are ahead of the game on some of them? So you know what I'm trying to say? And I think kind of related back to even what you had said is just making sure that we are referencing ourselves back to those policies and ensuring that we're making decisions based on them and everything. Does that make sense? So all encompassing, when I go through this one, this section every year, that's what I always think about. I get better at knowing the policies that are out there and making sure that we're referencing back to them. Any other thoughts?
We will move on to question six. The board actively participates in community events to build positive partnerships. That one did receive a performance needs expectation some of the time. For the most part, I think people were saying that this is a work in progress. I know that we do have the dashboard, the, not dashboard.
The form.
The Google form that Doug and his team created for us. So people do participate in municipality meetings or community events. That's an opportunity to be able to go in and document that. So we do have that and we have a specific goal or percentage to try to help improve that. Other thoughts or conversation dialogue along that?
I think having the information on our Google calendar really helps. I'm also staying very connected to how if we go out and visit with our municipalities and the meetings that they have as well, to kind of keep in town with what's going on in the community. So I feel like it's getting easier. It's not there yet, but it's getting easier.
I did fill out Doug's form. Doug? Easy, I can do that. Took me about two, three minutes to do, so if I could do it, no excuse for nothing, Doug. All right, it was very easy, very, very simple to fill out, took a few minutes. And, and yes, Dequinda, as you put all these things on our calendar, don't hesitate to put anything on there that we might be able to go to because that's, that's just another community event that we can reach out to people. It doesn't have to be a PTO, it could be anything, and any of the municipalities that we got going on. If you hear about it, put it on there so we have an opportunity to go see, see our constituents.
I'm gonna skip down to question fourteen unless there's one that someone wants to talk about before we get to that question. So this is the question that we always say that we are going to change because it has so much, so much in it. The board ensures the district's strategic plan, vision and mission statement, equity statement, governance policies, roles and responsibilities, policies and student achievement expectations are met. That's a lot in one question. I know for me, I feel like the student achievement is, student achievement expectations is something that should be separated out because that is an area of concern and an area where there's a lot of opportunity and need for growth. I know we are doing some work regarding the CBL and we've added some EL teachers, but there's still so much more opportunities to be able to support all of our students in our district, especially our students that have IEPs, our students that may have some behavioral challenges. So just, that's a lot to really get evaluated in one question. So I typically do write that lower just because. Any other thoughts?
I do the same thing when I read through it. It's always the student achievement that stands out to me is what, you know, is still our, across the book, we need to work on. But I think we're going in the right direction. I will tell you in the meetings that we had, I can't think of the names, data and dialogue.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think those are always great and I just love listening to them. And I love to see the data and know where we're going. I would also like to know like how many of them are on that cusp of making it to that next level? You know, it just, when you have three spots that kids fall into, it's very hard to really see where, you know, who's almost there and making it to that next level compared to, you know, the other areas that we definitely need to focus on with more strength. Anyway, I agree with you on that last one.
Other thoughts?
Then we will move on to question eighteen. The board actively participates in a review of the district's strategic plan. We'll read the separation of reports this time. So one question I had on this, how are we growing our constituent voice in this space in regards to the district's strategic plan? I know that we have our strategic planning meetings, but those typically seem to have to kind of evolve to where they are focused on a particular, particular topic and or a particular initiative that the district is focusing on, not so much that overall district's strategic plan. So I don't know if we are still capturing the community's voice as we're developing our strategic plan. Just something to think about. Any other feedback?
Think on that when I hug my head on the actively participates part. You know, again, I, you're right, it's a community thing, but we have, we, we ourselves have to be the leaders in saying, we have to be an active part of this. We can't be a passive participant because we're representing the community. The community tells us their duties. We invite people in from the community, but we have to lead that community as well. We got some root from the group here.
If no other thoughts? Thank you all for participating in the board self-eval. We are going to move on to three point five, board member comments. Does any board member have any comments that they would like to share?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So twice the night before Christmas, I thank you graciously to Nassan for getting that out to the counselors. I am going to be collecting items if you would like to donate. If you have books you would like me to pick up, Miss Penny, just let me know. And I will look at having a gathering on the seventeenth. And this time, I'll try not to get there too early and set everything up because it seems like when I get there too early, it's like we're done in a quick amount of time. So, so Sunday, December seventeenth is when we'll put them all together and then deliver them out there.
And is this the same place again?
Yes.
What time?
I usually like to do it like five, but I gotta, I, I just need to confirm with the church that groups will be out of there.
Anyone else? So we will move on to our consent agenda items section.
Madam President, I move that we approve consent agenda items four point one to four point eight.
Yes.
Yes.
Second. Mrs. Enrique Esmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Longes?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We will move on to our, I'm sorry, my screen jumped out. Closed session, so I'm looking for a motion.
I motion that we reconvene in closed session per state statute six ten dash zero two one for the purpose of a discussion of the agenda.
Second. Mrs. Enrique Esmond? Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garden? Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Longes?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We are now in closed session. We can take a five minute break.